Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August 13th, 2013 meeting of the Glendale City Council being called to order at 6:00 PM. We will call.
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Sananian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here.
Tonight will be led by Councilmember Quintero. Invocation, Barrie City Clerk Artic Casoff.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. As the summer break comes to an end and children all over our fair city began to go back to school yesterday, I ask that we pray for them and their families. Let us pray for their safety and for their health. We pray that they are successful in their academic and extracurricular pursuits so that they may grow up to become community leaders and active participants in our jewel city. We pray for our teachers and school support staff who work so very hard to ensure an environment of the highest quality and standards for our children. And we pray for the parents, the families, and loved ones of everyone who is going back to school this week and hope that this will be a safe, productive, and successful year for all. Amen.
May we have your report?
Agenda for the August 13th, 2013 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, August 8th, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And what is next?
Three A is agenda previews for the meetings of August 20, 2013.
Spears.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority for August 20th, we have one business agenda item, and that's Director of Community Development. This is regarding Section 8 Management Assessment Program, self-certification for fiscal year That afternoon, we also have a special meeting of the Glendale Successor Agency to commence at 3:00 PM. Director of Economic Development regarding Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, ROPS 13-14B, for January to June of 2014. Also that afternoon, we have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council, and that's to commence at 3:00 PM and not at 6:00 PM. This is City Manager regarding Award of Contract for Federal Legislative Advocacy Services. City Manager, this is regarding Award of Contract for State and Legislative Advocacy Services. And lastly, City Manager regarding Consideration of Proposed 2013-14 Legislative Platform. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. What is next, please?
Next is City Council and Staff comments.
Comments? Ms. Friedman.
Two things. First, this week, I attended the 20th Anniversary Celebration for Prom Plus. For those of you who are not familiar with this great organization, it's made up of kids and sponsors. And what they do is provide our youth a place to go that's safe after the prom, so that after their proms and high school, they don't go out and, you know, wander around and get into trouble. And so this way, they have a place to go that's supervised and safe, and they get hundreds of kids, maybe 500 kids each time. It's a wonderful program. They've been doing it for 20 years now. I want to congratulate all of them and thank them for their hard work, particularly for the young people. It's the kids themselves who really run this organization, and they are amazing. The Crescent Valley Weekly, I believe, was one of the hosts of the event, so thank you to them. And really, a lot of the communities involved in this, and I recommend to anybody who has any interest to look them up and see how you can help out. Secondly, I would like to ask my colleagues to support a resolution for us to pass urging the federal government and the U.S. Postal Service to keep our central post office, our historic central post office, open and in operation. As many of you know, the government is planning on closing the post office and selling the building to raise money. It's a wonderful building. It's a well-used asset in the community, and as we have residents moving into the downtown, will be even more heavily used. So I would like to ask council if they would support that.
Supported, but not going to convince the federal government what to do.
And I think the resolution needs to go to the postal service itself because it's really their call, as far as I know. But we can.
Considering how many bullions in the hole they are, God, if they listen to us either, but if you want to write it.
Okay. We have consensus. Thank you.
Ms. Najarian.
Couple items. First item is I would like to also have placed on the agenda a resolution by the City Council to support the actions of the Los Angeles City Council in declaring the, what is now the Verdugo Hills Golf Course site, a historical, I believe they declared a historical site. And 60 years ago, at that site, the Japanese-Americans were held basically as a holding station before they were shipped off to Manzanillo. And I know there is some, although it's not in the city of Glendale, it is an item of interest to many of the residents in northern Glendale. So I'd like to have that put on the agenda, supporting the designation, the L.A. City Council's designation of that as a historical site.
I'll say. I think they already did. Now there's going to be a lawsuit because they did.
That's correct. I believe that's correct.
So what do we?
We're standing in solidarity.
In the lawsuit? They're being sued.
No, we have no control, obviously, over preventing development, but as a standing on principle.
Symbolic.
Symbolically, yes. Is there a second?
Absolutely. Second.
So we stay out of the lawsuit.
Okay. And the other item I just wanted to raise and remind staff is I would like to have back a report on the status of the development projects in the entire downtown area. Where are we? How many units have been developed? Every day goes by, I get contacted and I hear that there are another, we said we're at the end of the development phase. I understand that there are still hundreds and hundreds of new projects in the pipeline or being developed. So I'd like to get that information with an eye towards, number one, adjusting our park and library impact fees, which we have, and number two, in adjusting the, some of the density issues in light of SB 1818. That'll be a discussion we can have at that point, and I'd like to, at the very least, have an informational update as to what's in the pike and what we can expect. I really want to keep a close eye, at least I want to be cognizant of what's going in there and not be surprised on a week-by-week basis. Here's another project, here's another project, here's another project. Is there anyone that can support that?
Sure.
Okay.
Now I'm in hearing. Did you?
No, we had that on the list. That'll come back this fall with action at the end of the year regarding the impact fees, if council so chooses. But we were waiting till it come back in the fall.
Great. That's fine.
Any other comments?
Comments?
Mr. Sananian?
Yes, in fact, just shortly from now, at 7:00 PM in Locust Center Valley, there's going to be held a workshop on teen drug abuse, and it's being jointly coordinated and organized by the Home Ed Men, Western Region, and Glendale Police Department. And this is, hopefully, it's planned to be first of a series of workshops targeted at first really assessing the scope of the drug abuse problem in our communities and doing something about it. So just wanted to point out the fact that the city's cooperating with community groups, police department, in making sure that this growing epidemic is addressed. It's impacting our community, it's impacting our children, and it's very important that we stay vigilant and deal with the issue straight on.
Any other comments? Thank you. What is next, please?
Next item on the agenda is consent items following your routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
I have a card in 5F.
I'll move the consent calendar and pull 5A.
F.
Second.
We'll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Please read 5F from the record.
5F is Acting General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding Betty Davis Recycled Water Project. F1 is motion awarding a design build contract to E.J. Meyer Company an amount of $1,426,700, authorizing a contingency of $142,670, and rejecting all other proposals.
Two minutes to do you? Two minutes, okay?
This was timed at about two and a half minutes.
Three minutes.
Carolyn West, member of Glendale Rancho Neighborhood Association, on Rancho Avenue since November of 1999. Forty years ago today, I started 35 and a half years of work for the state of California with four different agencies, Veterans Affairs, Savings and Loan, Corrections, and Caltrans. All this work was property-related and people-related. I reviewed homesites on branches bordering Hurst Castle in the depths of the Mojave Desert. I appraised acreage west of Phoenix that was part of the Keating Bank fraud. I oversaw 125 acres of state prison grounds and worked hands-on with inmate crews. I worked debt collections, natural disasters, and helped many folks get settled in homes. I was overwhelmed with paperwork related to my father's death when the December 2011 spraying roundup caught me and my dog unawares. She erped all over the house, and I got mad. Years of drought had killed grass, promoted weeds, overstressed sycamores. I got a meeting set up where my neighbor and I were promised notice of more spraying. Never happened. We saw the plan calling for around 250-foot length of mulch along Rancho to the horse trail. We spent Christmas time researching mulch fires and other detrimental aspects of mulch. The plan was revised to push it back and continue grass along Rancho Avenue, but all was not well. I found there was no EIR and no negative declaration. There was virtually no regard for existing park users or neighboring residents. A few good trees were felled in the massive tree cutting. The trench-intensive sprinkler system breaks and clogs easily. My written complaints to management about what was happening to oak trees produced a statement, "We know how to care for oak trees." Roots continued to be cut, equipment stored under tree canopies, and graders were run under oak canopies. I was promised twice that aerating of the soil would take place, but it did not. Along the west side, virtually nothing was done prior to spreading of some grass seed and applying water. Stretches of ground remained rock-hard and covered with pigweed, et cetera. The access road in the turn at Rancho was planted with grass and barricaded despite protests. At the end of the project, an area across from my house was deprived of water and declared a proper oak care zone. I am in the park daily for ambiance while I pick up fallen branches, trash, dog turds, and walk over weeds, dead grass, vehicle ruts, pluck bull heads out of the dogs' feet. Loose dogs and their turds are abundant. Almost all managed to miss the rare ranger appearances. Along the fence at the northwest corner of the park next to Easter Field, there is a big row of dog turds. A great welcoming mat right where we need a Betty Davis Park sign, so people will have some idea what park this is and who controls it.
Thank you. Mrs. Friedman.
Yeah, I've talked to Ms. West and to the Rancho folks about this for quite a while now. Just so people know, this park that is being talked about is a Los Angeles City Park, not a Glendale park, but it abuts the city of Glendale, so it impacts our residents. But even though it's not our park, our staff has been very actively trying to deal with some of the maintenance issues there. And we have made progress. And just today, Mr. Taglin had sent, I think, an email to the people in Rancho explaining the progress that we've made, the frustrations that we have trying to get Los Angeles to maintain their own park to the standards that Glendale maintains its parks, which just isn't going to happen, it looks like, at least in the near future. But there is progress that's been made. But I have talked to staff about this particular project and its impact on this park, and I do not believe that voting against the recycled water project would have an impact on the maintenance of this park either way. I think it's a project that helps Glendale probably more than it helps Los Angeles, and Los Angeles could get this water from somewhere else. So I don't think that we have the leverage that the neighborhood thinks that we have with this particular project. I've become convinced of that. But that doesn't mean we're going to stop talking to them about the park, because we do want them to maintain the park better than they're maintaining it and to make some of the improvements that the neighbors have been asking for and have been promised. And so we're going to stay on it, I promise you, and we'll do whatever we can, because it's not our park, but it's right next to our neighborhood.
Anticipating that, if it may please the council, I know we have a couple of members from, Councilman Labanja's office from, it's Labanja, yes, here in the audience anticipating this particular item coming up, as well as, I believe, L.A. Parks. So perhaps they can go and talk with Ms. West.
That would be great.
Okay, I'll move the item at 5A.
Is there a second?
Second.
5F. We'll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes, and I do hope that Ms. West gets together with them here before they all leave so they can chat face-to-face while they have the opportunity. Yes.
Najarian.
We'll call.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
All right. Okay, what is next, please?
Next on the agenda is listed as oral communications. However, we will split oral communications into two portions. The first portion will be reserved for three-minute community announcements. Those wishing to speak for a full five minutes on any items non-agenda will reserve their comments for the conclusion of all city business.
Were those the L.A. people that left? No. Just wanted to make sure. I don't know who's who out there. Okay, four speakers. Adam Kloyes, is it? Three minutes.
Good evening, City of Glendale. My name is Adam Kloyes. I'm here on behalf of the Veteran Welcome Center at Wellness Works Glendale. I was in the Army from '97 to 2010. As it turned out for me, three of my six tours were year-long tours in Iraq. Coming back and forth, in and out of a combat zone, is at least a profound experience. I won't pretend that the past three years have been easy. They have not been easy. Still, it's a process. It can start to feel overwhelming at times because there's just so much to process, yet somehow, every day, I get up and process a little more. Welcome Center gets to be part of my process. Free salmon burger, barbecue, acupuncture, energy balance, massage, reflexology, and yoga can all be a welcome addition to my physical process and, in some cases, my mental process. But the center is also my support group and writer's workshop, plus there are always insightful classes and various entertainment offered on the calendar. I'm not always there, but I do find it to be an invaluable resource that I try to take advantage of. If you know a vet, ask if they know about the Veterans Welcome Center on 540 West Broadway. This Saturday is the third Saturday of August. That means the Welcome Center is having its barbecue, and as always, is free to veterans. This month, the barbecue is going to be a little different. Last month, they did all the regular burgers and hot dogs, but they were also making individual gourmet pizzas made at order. These custom barbecue pizzas were such a success that it had, has been unanimously decided that this month will be all pizzas and no hot dogs and burgers. This will ensure the maximum variety of pizza topping options. I wasn't able to go last month, so I'm looking forward to making up my own mind about the pizzas. I had suggested that they have broccoli as a topping, and they said that the broccoli sold out fast. In fact, this Saturday might be a good time for you to bring your veteran friend so that they can check the place out. Mark it on your calendar app, then see the Wellness Works calendar online at wellnessworksglendale.org or call 818-247-2062. On behalf of the Veterans Welcome Center at Wellness Works Glendale, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kathy Gonzalez. Ms. Maldonado coming with you?
Yeah.
18.
Actually, three. There's also Steven Gonzalez.
Okay, how many? I have two cards. Steven Gonzalez?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I'll be Steven and myself speaking.
You're the speaker.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm Kathy Gonzalez. I'm the ACS manager for the Glendale Relay for Life. This is Mary Ann Robertson. She's one of the co-chairs. Brianna Maldonado, who is the chair, and Steven Gonzalez, who is also a co-chair. I want to introduce them because they're the community leadership of this event. It's now the 10th Annual Glendale Relay for Life, and we're coming here today to thank everyone in this room for their support and also to invite them. We're having a very exciting year. It's the American Cancer Society's 100th birthday and also the 10-year Glendale Relay for Life. So we really want to make sure we get it out there to our community to come and invite you. It's October 19th and 20th of this year. Steven also has some updates for you, but we just want to extend a very warm thank you. We also have an official thank you for Glendale Management Association. I don't know if anyone is here to accept that, but we.
Right there.
It's just a formal thank you for the support year after year. Without support like this, we don't have a fight against cancer, and it's very important within this community. We have a really good rally and showing, so thank you so much.
Yeah.
Mayor and the council, thank you for your time. We wanted to just come on out and let you know that right now, we're in the middle of our Paint the Town, and we were hoping that we could have your support in that Paint the Town purple by allowing us to be able to put ribbons along a brand on the light posts, if we could, to show support for us until our kickoff on the 21st, which is at Hoover, which we would like to also invite you to. The kickoff is on the 21st at 7:00. We'd also like to let you know that we have some little ribbons that if any of you are interested, we can get you some for showing your support as well for us. Sorry about that.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
What was the date again, further relay?
October 19th and 20th at Shoal Canyon Falls Field.
October 19th and 20th.
Yes, so that I can.
Shoal Canyon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, that takes care of the three minutes. What is next, please?
Next on the agenda is adoption of ordinances at 7A is ordinance amending chapters 30.26 Advertising Signage Overlay Zone and 30.33 Signs. This was introduced on July 30th, 2013 by Councilmember Quintero.
And do you want to read in 7B too?
Sorry?
Read 7B in.
7B is an ordinance amending the zoning map. This was also introduced July 30th, 2013 by Councilmember Quintero.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero?
Mike Fun. The advertising signage overlay zone and associated zoning map, we've made some adjustments based on council directive and discussion, and Mr. Kiesel will give you the overview as to what that is.
And we did have a long discussion on this.
I'm sorry?
And we did have a long discussion on this.
Okay. All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. On July 30th, you all introduced an ordinance amending the advertising signage overlay zone, which you initially approved about three years ago. The amendments included allowing non-accessory signs and animated signs, and then also expanding the types of signs allowed in the ASOZ. Before you this evening is the ordinance for adoption enabling these amendments. After your hearing on the 30th, in reviewing the ordinance, staff is recommending a slight change to one section of the ordinance, Section 30.26.100 titled Development Agreement Required, and a sheet. This was just passed out a couple minutes ago. Currently, if you look at the ordinance that was submitted as part of your packet, line seven reads, "Said development agreement shall be approved prior to the issuance of permits for the signs authorized by this chapter." Staff is recommending or suggesting that this language be revised as follows. Said development agreement shall be approved prior to the issuance of permits or installation, whichever comes first, for ASOZ non-accessory signs and sign structures and animated signs and sign structures. Basically, this change is to enable signs that the Americana really wants to install before the opening of Nordstrom's to be installed without approval of the development agreement holding up the signs that you saw last, or two weeks ago. Also at this July 30th meeting, there was some discussion and interest in requiring what staff is calling downtown business identification signs. If council's inclined to adopt the ordinance with this additional requirement, you also received this evening an alternative ordinance. And that's labeled, "Alternative Ordinance Includes Downtown Business Identification Signs" as the title. Basically, this ordinance that you got tonight is identical to the one that you received in your packets, aside from it also includes this recommended language that I just described. But it includes a new type of permitted ground sign, which is the downtown business identification sign. And that change is on, I'm sorry, pages five and six, and it's underlined language. So that's the new language inserted into the alternative ordinance, if you all are inclined to want to do that. There are some standards included in the ordinance for downtown business identification signs. Generally, the standards include timelines as to when the signs should be installed, and then generally where they will be installed, so the location and then the time. In addition, they, that these signs can be interactive but are not required to be interactive, and that they be pedestrian-oriented and provide direction to businesses or other points of interest in the area, but don't contain any advertising. Those are just a summary of the standards that are contained in the, in the alternative ordinance. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So I want to ask, how would we do this? We have an ordinance that was introduced by Mr. Quintero. Can we just substitute and say?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, whoever would like to make the motion could then make the motion with the revised language that was written to the record by Mr. Kiesel on both, on both cases.
That easy.
Right.
Okay.
So many.
I have cards.
You do have cards?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question for Mr. Kiesel. Referencing Section 30.26.100, midway through the sentence that begins, "Said development agreement shall be approved prior to the issuance of permits or installation, whichever comes first." Shouldn't permits always come first before there's an installation?
Okay, that's a good question. There are instances now where the signs that are up there now are like a vinyl film. They can replace those without getting a building permit.
I got you.
And so that's why that language is there.
Okay.
So, for instance, if they want to install a vinyl with off-site signage, sign, signs, something, a sign that advertises something outside the ASOZ, they would need to have an approved development agreement before they could do that.
Okay. Okay, that was my question.
Yeah, all right. I have a couple cards. Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the City Council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond, and I've lived here a long, long time. And I remember when the ordinance, sign ordinance, was originally brought up many years ago, and it was because our street brand was beginning to look like Hollywood Boulevard. And I keep wondering if we were trying to overtake Hollywood Boulevard at this time. I was sued by Mr. Caruso because I said that we should keep to the ordinance that there was a four-by-six signs that would go on the outside of the Americana. And he said, "I, I and other citizens that were sued at the same time, we're talking out of our hats," so to speak. And that was one thing. The other thing was, of course, we said they were going to get away with taking over Harvard and taking over Orange, which exactly is what Mr. Caruso has been handed, Orange and Harvard, without paying a nickel for it. So, and look at the signs on Americana. I think they could outdo Hollywood Boulevard and Sunset Boulevard put together. And yet, what can we do? He said that was not going to happen. No, uh-uh. No, uh-uh. And I don't know about the rest of you, but I really feel that we've sold out on allowing Glendale to put in all these huge signs, some of them that have no connection to our events in Glendale or anything else. I really don't understand how we let it go on and on, and it seems like it's never going to stop. But I am going to voice my opinion and my protest. And as I said, I was sued by Mr. Caruso because I said that what he's doing is exactly what he was going to do, and he said, "No, he wasn't." I have the papers, if anybody's interested. He denied that he was ever going to do big signs like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for speaking out, Margaret. Next speaker, Johnny Harrison.
Good evening, Johnny Harrison, Lexus of Glendale and Brand Boulevard of Cars. I come here tonight to talk about signage. It seems to be quite the topic over the last several years, about signage in Glendale. One thing, as we've looked at digital signs over the last several years, and there's actually three on the, to be reviewed as we speak right now. I just learned of these two roughly about an hour ago, and just thought I'd come down here to voice a little bit of concern about signage. And if you can imagine why I would be talking about signage, signage to auto dealers is very important. We're all in agreeance of signage. We're all in agreeance of signages for the betterment of Glendale. And as the latest speaker before me visited that going forward with digital signs is very important for this city. But it's very important for this city as it relates to advertising businesses that are in this city. With the economic downturn, as we all know, we need tax dollars. There's no way of hands or butts around that. I don't have to tell you that. You address it every day. So, people doing business in Glendale generates more tax dollars. For us to advertise for those businesses and allow just those businesses to advertise is the right way to go for the city of Glendale, and the Brand Boulevard's, Brand Boulevard of Cars' opinion, as well as myself, because what's best for Glendale is what we really should be looking for. We're in favor of digital signs, as we've talked about with the Caltrans signs. But in turn, we should restrict those signage to advertise for the actual, for the city of Glendale, for both city events as well as local businesses in town. Thank you.
Mr. Harrison, Mike Mohill.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. Déjà vu, here we go again, signage. We want to look like Hollywood. We want to look like Las Vegas. Do we need digital signs? Of course we don't. But we do because we need the new revenue. That's what it's all about. We need revenue. Who cares about any other issue, as long as we keep the money flowing inside the city? Do we really want to have neon lights up and down the city? You let one person in, before you know it, you have 101 people having signs up and down Brand, Central. Why not even Honolulu Avenue? Where is it going to stop? You let, what's the expression? The horse out of the barn? And then everybody wants signage and digital and neon and... I'm totally against it. There was a reason why the city spent thousands of dollars to tear down those ugly signs up and down the streets, Brand, Central, San Fernando Road. And here we are again. We want to bring it back up. Why? Because we need the money. But do the citizens of Glendale really want to see advertising signs up and down the streets? I don't mind a little bit. But I don't need to have a sign right in my face when I drive down Brand or Central. This is not the time. I believe in advertising. I believe in the truth of advertising, in fact. But we don't have to pull over people's face. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
Thank you. I have no more cards. Is there any further discussion, or is there a motion on 7A?
I'd like to move the item. Can I do 7A and B?
Individually.
Individually. I'll move 7A, but with the alternate language.
Second.
Is that okay, Mr. Richol? Okay, no further discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes, yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sinian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye.
And I'll move 7B with the alternate language.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sinian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Thank you. What is next?
At 7C is an ordinance amending chapter 13.44 related to Glendale Water and Power Electric Rates and Changes. This was introduced on August 6, 2013 by Councilmember Najarian. At C1 is the resolution establishing electric rates for GWP customers.
Okay, let's see. We left off last week, I'd closed the public speaking portion. Everybody on the council dais spoke, except Mr. Najarian, who introduced the ordinance with the proviso that he could speak some more today. Before he does, Mr. Richol, is there anything you want to say at all?
I would, if it pleases the council, there's just a couple of things that we wanted to cover by way of clarification, and then get council direction on the low-income discount. We didn't quite get to that last time. So, if I can have the PowerPoint up. One of the things that we had heard from some of the speakers was quite a bit of confusion when they thought about what, when they were speaking about what they saw as the increase by way of GWP electric. And so, we wanted to make sure that folks knew indeed that when we're talking about electric, it is a part of the utility bill, but the entire utility bill that our residents get is made up of water, sewer, rubbish, hazardous waste, UUT, the energy surcharge, as well as electric. And so, when people were listening to what we characterized as their average electric usage, some of them had indicated that didn't jive with what their bill said. Well, many of them had come to find out that they're talking about their entire municipal services bill. By the same token, there were some folks that were incredulous about the average usage that was called out by way of the comparisons for rate purposes. And so, we went and pulled even more comparisons and gave you some of the profiles. So, a 2,200-square-foot home, four occupants, no pool, central air, this is what they're paying per month. The average there is 440, or the actual there is 441 compared to the average that we showed at 659. Other folks, a smaller house, four occupants, no pool, window air, they just happen to use a lot of electricity. You could see there, 578 kilowatt-hours is their monthly bill. A larger home, three occupants, pool and central air, obviously, they're going to be using more, 828. So, the idea being 659 really was the average kilowatt usage for a single-family residential. By the same token, when you look at multifamily, a one-bedroom, two occupants, window air, 225 kilowatt-hours per month, 338 for two bedrooms, two occupants, central air, 381, and so on and so forth. You get the idea that what we're trying to demonstrate is that is what the actual number is for folks, based on what it is that we're pulling from the survey data. Same thing as we talk more about the low-income bill. This is somebody using a very small amount of electricity. We said the average was 250. There's someone at 166, one-bedroom, two occupants, central air. What this also shows you, however, is what the bill is actually with the $10 discount as part of Glendale Cares. And in this 1314, this is the proposed amount. This would jump up from 2963 a month to 3238, less the $10 discount is represented here for an actual bill of 2238. Here's somebody else, low-income, but still now they're using more than what the average allot, 316, or what the average suggests, 316 kilowatt-hours. One-bedroom, two occupants, central air, same kind of ratios as you see. We wanted to get direction from City Council on this particular matter. As you know from the last time, we presented you with what the staff recommendation has been. The existing $10 low-income discount graduated to $11 in the first year, 12, 1250, 1250, ultimately progressing to $13. As you can see how the anticipated rate tracks going forward, you can see that the net bill, the low-income bill after the discount, it goes from 2994 to 3259, 35, 37, 38, and then $39, following the 87522 trend. The 10, 11, 12, 1250, 1250, $13 represents about 25%. It's a flat amount, but it represents about a 25% discount. That is what the staff had recommended at your last meeting. We heard a great deal of testimony about the impact of the economy and the impact on the low-income users. So, what we have as an alternative scenario for you is taking that $10 discount to $13, beginning year one, $13 year two, and so on, all the way out to year 18. What that does, you see, the low-income, the net low-income bill goes from 2994 to $30.59. That's about a 65 cent per month increase, which I think is extraordinarily reasonable for our customers. And you can see how it really tracks up with the seven, the five, and then it drops down with the two and the two. Again, flat amounts, $13 straight across the board, representing 25% of the bill in this current period, but in the first year, it represents about 30% of the bill. And then you can see it start to ebb down as this amount is a flat amount. It starts to decrease all the way down to 25% in that final out year. We, at this point, can afford this. We have confidence that we can make this happen. For Glendale Cares, it does represent an increase in the discount amount, and thus it is a policy matter for council to consider. But it is something that we can do while still maintaining the level of programming in the Public Benefits Program. So, this would show you here, just a couple of slides. You see that this is the 1213 year, and this is the current 1314 year. It's a little hard to see in the red, but this first line represents the original staff recommendation. This would be Alternative A, the red line, that shows you what the bill would be at 166 kilowatt-hours. That's the very low, low-income user, low usage for low-income user. And you can see coming across the bottom that the rate actually goes down in the first year and then climbs ever so slightly going forward. By the same token, the higher-end low-income user, 316 kilowatt-hours, you can see similarly the difference between the original proposed recommendation, the alternative proposed recommendation, and the impact here, as you see climbing across with the $13 as opposed to no discount. And you can see how that tracks accordingly. With that, sir, we would entertain any questions you may have.
Before you speak, my colleagues all want to consider the 13 rather than 10.
Yeah, I'm for 13 rather than 10.
I am too.
So, is the 10 versus 13, is this part of the same ordinance?
Yeah.
Not so much the ordinance, but the resolution and direction to staff, rather.
Right, it would be a motion directing staff because the budget's already set by the resolution. As far as the PBC charge, you're basically directing staff to increase that from $10 to $13 per month.
Bigger break.
I guess the question I'm asking is, the rate increase plan, independent of, is the vote on the low-income help, is that independent of the rate increase plan, how you vote on that?
My suggestion would be, yeah, we take that separate.
Okay. In that case, I support it also.
Quintero? Okay, now let me get it straight. We have the ordinance, and we have the resolution. Will it be a substitute resolution?
No, my suggestion would be, because it's all related to, it is related to the rate increase, the ordinance and resolution, that the council also adopt a separate motion. It can do that because it's related to those items.
It's a separate motion.
It's essentially directing staff because the budget's already set by the pro forma.
So, we'd adopt this resolution?
Correct.
And then a second resolution, raise it.
A motion.
Mr. Najarian, you...
So, I have some questions and, I guess, comments after the questions are put out and actually interspersed within. And just so people reminded, it was last meeting where we had a heckler in the audience that disrupted the flow of my comments. I don't know if anyone else was, felt that way. And I do appreciate many of the residents that sent me emails. And one thing I asked for last week was if you disagree with the rate, proposed rate increase by staff, not just to say you're against it, but to give me and us alternative proposals that we could look at and see if it's at all feasible. I don't think anyone up here likes to raise the rates. I'm sure of that, but this is the situation we have. Now, several questions, and, Mr. Mayor, I would invite my colleagues that upon the response to these questions, if they feel the information is false, is inaccurate, is a lie, that we immediately get into that rather than a delayed response. You're running the meeting, it's up to you, but...
Let's see where it goes.
Okay, so the first question is, the first question that I have is regarding the Grandview Substation, which is a capital, a fairly expensive capital upgrade to the tune of $20 million. Number one, is that upgrade of that substation solely for serving the Disney campus and the GC3 campuses?
No.
On Northwest, right?
And who does it serve?
It feeds Northwest. If you don't improve Grandview, then you can't do anything further with Disney because they can't work there, or the load is not supported. But Grandview needs to be rebuilt today. Rebuilding it at least gives you a choice as to what to do at the GC3 campus. Without it, you can't do anything, and you still have the problems that you have in terms of isolating Northwest Glendale.
Okay. Is there, and the word you used now was "today." Can this be delayed four-plus years out in the future and maintain a reliable system serving, as you said, Northwest and the GC3 campus?
In our professional recommendations, sir, no.
Okay, so that's $20 million we just can't cut out and put back. That's how I'm understanding your response.
Yes.
And I don't know if any of my colleagues think that that's false or have an opposing opinion, but that's the information I'm getting, and that's the information I'm working with.
That's not what I heard Mr. Manager say, though.
Okay.
I heard the response being that Disney will be deprived of electricity, they won't have electricity. But otherwise, how is it going to impact Northwest, not residential?
Right now, the northwest corner of the city, south of the Verdugos, is, there is, it's surrounded by 12-kilovolt feeders, and it is still a 4-kilovolt system there in Northwest. We have to rebuild Grandview in order to be able to feed that area in Northwest, or find a way to take energy that would otherwise be coming in to Northwest because that's the primary feed, to take it down from 12 kilovolts to 4 kilovolts, which basically wastes the investment that you've already made in areas of, that are south of El Miradero and into the Rossmoyn area where you have 12 kilovolt. So, you need to find a way to achieve redundancy in Northwest today. That has to happen through Grandview. We were working on Grandview two years ago, actually, more than two years ago, and when I arrived and recognized that we were operating a capital program without the cash flow coming in, we were digging a deeper and deeper hole, we had to stop everything just so we could determine truly where the bottom was in terms of our finances. We had to stabilize. So, we stopped everything on Grandview. At this point, if we keep going with what we have today by way of a partially initiated investment in Grandview Substation, the money that we've already put out will be essentially wasted. And I would defer to Mr. Abwig to give you the details on that. In fact, we can go through the entire capital program if the council so chooses. But the idea of spending another $19.5 million to rebuild Grandview provides the stability for that area, the redundancy in providing that service to make sure that if something does go down, we can bring it back very quickly. The issue with Disney gets included because in order for them to continue to grow, we need more capacity in that neighborhood. But again, regardless, if they never built another stick of building, we need to rebuild Grandview.
And we've been doing that around the city gradually, going to 12 KV.
We've been converting four to 12. That is the most efficient way for us to... That is the most efficient way for us to move forward, and it is expensive, but it is the next evolution of our electric system. If we were to stop now, we'd have a hodgepodge of 12 KV areas and 4 KV areas. And that is not good because anytime you're trying to feed the power into the areas that have not been upgraded, you either have to reroute it or bring it down from 12 to 4, which, again, you start to waste the investment you've already made.
Is there an alternative that, although temporary, will sort of satisfy the needs for now, for a couple of years?
I think each period of time that goes by, we run a greater and greater risk. The risk of losing our initial investment continues to grow. I would defer to Mr. Abueg if he have more detailed questions. He, I'm sure, can articulate it much more thoroughly than I.
Good evening. Ramona Abueg, Assistant General Manager for GWP. One of the challenges that we have in the area that we're talking about is we have invested close to $15 million in the last few years and during the conversion. We basically have designed and built the pipeline, have completed some of the reconstruction. We have not done all the conversion, but everything's already rated for 12 KV. The only thing lacking right now is the substation itself. That's the biggest item. That's not only lacking, there's some more conversion we need to do. And one of the issues that we have now too is we now have created an island, that area around the Bel Air substation. We have created a 4 KV island because we're waiting for the substation. If we have anything catastrophic right now, and Bel Air substation is very old, as well as Grandview, we have no way to feed that without undoing the work that we've already done. Like I said, we've invested close to $15 million in the last few years in that area.
So we could lose Northwest?
We can lose Northwest for a long duration of time, and will take us a while to restore And by the way, let me answer the Disney, just for clarification. The Disney's impact is, it just, it does affect the size of the substation, but regardless of Disney, we will, we need to do the work. Basically, it says that we just need more capacity to support that growth.
So let me ask you this. When did the situation become so critical in terms of if something catastrophic were to happen, we'd lose Northwest, like Mr. Mayor put it? Did this just happen this year? Did it happen a couple of months ago? Have we been in this status for a while?
Yeah, it actually started back in 2005, when we're slowly rebuilding. I don't know if you recall back in 2005, we had a lightning that struck, stroked back in that area. We lost the whole transmission line that connects that part into the Northwest. We started rebuilding that at that time. The transformers inside the Bel Air substations and underground substation, it doesn't have the cooling-heating that we want, and they are getting old. We're watching the load, how much we loaded on a regular basis at any moment, and we do test the transformers at any moment, but if it does happen, we don't have any way to back it up at this time.
But we had other work in other parts of the city that we continued to work on. So what is this, as though there was one rotten egg in that very large basket? There were a number of projects that needed to be addressed, and they were triaged, and they were being addressed. Grandview, as I say, up until it was, it was Grandview's turn as a project three years ago, but, you know, a year and a half ago, two years ago, we were running out of money. We had not increased rates, yet we continued to build out. And so we had to hit the emergency brake and say, wait a second, let's take the full measure of what our infrastructure program is and what our capacity as a utility is, and try to match them against one another. And so at this point, we could not responsibly, professionally, ethically recommend to you that you keep going without a capital program. You need to be putting 20 to 30 million dollars a year into the system as the cost of ownership of the system. And in this case, the most pressing priority is going to be Grayson, and it's going to be Grandview.
And I understand that, and I appreciate that. I'm not making light of the fact that this is outdated technology, that it needs to be brought into line with what we have happening with the rest of the city. But from what I understand, this critical nature of the problem has been the case since 2005. And the question is, is there a remedial measure that can be taken at this time that's less than 20 million dollars? That's maybe, I don't know, a million dollars, or, you know, which can give us all in the city some breathing space so that we don't have to burden the residents with a 30% increase? That's the fundamental question.
I don't know the specific answer to that question, but it does occur to me that you can spend $15 million twice, or you can spend $20 million once.
You can't build part of the substation and not the whole system, and I assume you prioritized where to upgrade first.
That's correct. Yeah, let me clarify. What happened in 2005, one of the things, when we lost the transmission line, we also were having problems in the northwest part of Glendale, in the Montrose Lacrisana. That's when we brought you the Glorieta substation upgrade. I don't know if you recall that. That's the area where identified that there's absolutely no way we can back up the Montrose substation, and we would have lost anything north of Honolulu and up if something happened to the station. We did that first, we did the conversion. And what we're doing with that, dealing with that, we're also upgrading the distribution system on the Grandview side, because those two, over the Verdugo Mountains, we had transmission lines connecting those. The impact of that lightning stroke in 2005, unfortunately, we have limited funds, so as Mr. Ochoa stated, we prioritize and identify that we needed to do that Northwest part while we upgrade while we can. So we didn't ignore it. We did do the stopgap that we needed to do to keep the lights on. And like I said, we invested about $15 million just in that part of the area, with lacking one major step, which is the substation.
Okay.
Next question?
Okay, thank you. Next question. Except for the most radical and extreme points of view, most of the emails I got acknowledged that their, that a transfer from the GWP to the general fund should continue. However, suggestions have been made that we should reduce that transfer this year to the tune of $4 million or so. And I know we just went through the budget process. I didn't see an extra $4 million to cut. I know we have gone through a series of cutbacks, layoffs, early retirements, two-tier pension, et cetera. Is there another $4 million that we can cut from our general budget, from our general fund budget, to reduce the transfer?
Not without making wholesale changes to the services that you provide. And by that, I mean closing down all but the central library branch, severely restricting park operations. And you know, the quality of life that folks in Glendale expect, you know, we got quite a few complaints just this past year with restriction of hours at the skate park, for example. And the heartfelt pleas from parents that if you cut hours at the skate park, those kids are going to fall into the depths of crime and drugs and everything else. And that's not to say that they were overblown or wrong, but nobody wants their particular ox to get gored. And so, as you say, sir, you went through the budget process, you know what our finances are. Unless we are willing to make those wholesale changes, and in all likelihood, based on the initial responses we're getting, not the initial, the actual draft responses we're getting back from citizen satisfaction survey, the two top priorities from our residents are maintaining a physically safe environment prepared for emergencies, and then immediately follow, that's 79% of our residents saying that's very important, and then 71% of our residents also saying it's very important to maintain robust improvement plan for streets, traffic, water, and power. So that tells me the only place that folks are even consider, considering cutting are what we would term soft services, your parks, your libraries, and other types of quality of life services.
Can I just comment on that, Mr. Nagerian? Don't mean to interrupt. Now, I can bring an example, slight example, I don't know about $4 million, that's stretching it, but I'm talking about sort of a cultural change, change the way that we think about it, and try to maximize what it is that we can cut. In this year's budget, there was a step increase for some top managers. And I want our management to be happy just as much as anyone else. But 200, close to $200, $250,000, that could be another $250,000 that could be cut from the, from the transfer this year. Now, is that not the case? I mean, is that not a fair statement to say?
I'm not aware which managers got that step increase. Now, I can tell you that the fire union had bargained for a contract increase now, and that was an agreement made to, made with the union in good faith, and to the credit of the union, they pushed that increase back several years, and in doing so, increased their portion of the cost that they pay of their pension. And so, to the extent that...
That's not what I'm referring to.
But the idea being that there are costs of employment, I think when you consider that, our employees, our general employees haven't had cost of, cost of living increases in 2008. We have shared the increase in medical 50-50. We have increased the cost of purse. Certainly, we could always go further, I suppose, if you're willing to impose on those employees the terms of their employment, which is a policy decision for the council. I would suggest to you that ultimately, we reap what we sow, however. And when you consider that our employees pay a greater share of the cost of their own employment than anybody in this region, and possibly even anybody in the state, it will ultimately have an impact when raises are being given at different levels on three sides of us.
I appreciate that, and I also know that Glendale is a great place for people to work, and I know that people work, a lot of people work in Glendale because it is in Glendale. The fact they're working Glendale is a great opportunity for a lot of people. I personally think there will never be a shortage of people wanting to work for this great city. I want to believe that, I don't know. That's what I want to believe. But all the math that's been done in terms of, you know, the projections as to what happens if the proposed plan is implemented, in terms of how much the reserves will grow, and when will hit positive, you know, positive flows opposed to negative, does that take into account the fact that, for example, are, a lot of our employees, or all of them, haven't really received any increases for four years? So at some point, they're going to ask for it, right? And at some point, I assume we have to give it to them, because we can't keep them in the status quo for an indeterminate amount of time. So has that been factored into the math, into the calculations?
These are reflecting general types of cost increases within GWP, but not really identifying a cost of, a cost of living increase for either IBW or the GMA employees in GWP. Same thing with the five-year financial forecast that the council took in as part of the budget. That did not factor in anything beyond that which was already contracted through, to the fire union. That kept everybody flat, recognizing that it would be impractical to think that everyone's going to be flat for the indefinite amount of time, as you realistically point out. But it's a situation wherein if we can't afford it, we can't give it, and if we can't give it, we're telling our employees just not to ask for it. The council expressed its leadership on the matter by imposing on IBW, and that is, that has its reverberations, not even in Glendale, but throughout the region, even still today.
See, my fear is that once that time does come, and it just absolutely is impossible not to, not to raise salaries, that's going to throw the math off, and, you know, the projected 250,000 decrease in the transfers is going to become a lesser amount. Or, I mean, well, yeah, the decrease is going to be, become a lesser amount, and potentially the transfer actually increases. And that throws off the whole math on, you know, the rates and everything, and then we're here in 2018, 2019, not asking for an annual 2% increase, but another 8% increase, for example.
Except that that decision, that policy decision, has to come back to you in public, and if you were, I would suggest to you that if you were going to do that, it would have been easy to have done that when you cut 242 full-time salaried positions, and you didn't. You dropped the transfer by $250,000 a couple of years ago. This past year, we could have taken a breather, and we didn't. We dropped another $250,000 as the council so-directed. I mean, we work at the council's pleasure, most certainly, but to the extent that this council has done the right thing again and again, I would only reflect back to you, sir, and say, you know, you tell them, you give me the marching orders, and we will go and take that hill.
And we will negotiate all the contracts next year again.
We've been rolling one-year contracts this whole time, except for fire.
You'll be a party to it.
Council in previous years had set a reserve policy of $124 million.
Yes, sir.
For that. What is the risk if we lower that target to, let's say, 80 million?
It's the same risk that you have if you don't have insurance for an asset. And when that asset falls away, if you don't have health insurance and you have a catastrophic injury or illness, and you very often find yourself in bankruptcy. The idea of not having adequate reserves for what is a $300 million ongoing concern is concerning. And so, to the extent that the analysis that was done in '06 to target 124, which is on the lower side of moderate, you know, we felt that holding steady to that was prudent. Could you go lower? As a separate policy decision, you could. I would strongly encourage you actually do a study dedicated towards that. But even on that front, if the council decided after approving a rate plan that, in the subsequent year, that you undertook a study and determined that you don't need 124, you need $80 million in reserves, through the mechanisms, the adjustment mechanisms that we have, we can adjust the rate plan downward in those subsequent years. As I sit here today, I don't know that I would recommend to you that you deviate too far away from the target that we have, but again, it is a policy decision, and it's not a problem until it's a problem. You don't need that type of insurance until you have a problem, until you need it.
So that number was achieved after a study with a consultant, independent of any budgetary or rate issues, is that correct, in 2006? And council came up with it, that's not staff?
It was, it was council's adopted policy.
Council adopted.
We talked about, this could be brought back as a separate issue in the future discussed, just that very thing.
Okay, let me, let me move along here. What if we just did a 3%, 3%, 3% increase? What would that do to us?
Based on the modeling that we've done, that does put you out of business in 2016. You never get positive net income, and your reserves run negative right about 2016.
Okay, when you say "out of business" and "reserves run negative," that means we use up all the cash and we have no money to operate?
That's correct.
If we were a private business, independent from any other source of funding, we'd be out of business, broke. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what if we went, someone else has floated a 4%, 4%, 4%?
Again, with the assumptions that we would do capital along the recommended lines, you could do a capital program, and our modeling suggests that on that four plan, as we had termed it, that you would not achieve positive operating income until the final year of the plan, and your reserves would be at 15 million.
So you'd eat away the reserves to make up for the loss up until that year, 2015, you said?
In 2018.
2018. Okay. I don't think those are viable alternatives. I am not an electrical engineer. I take the words, although you're an engineer.
No, not electrical.
I take the, I have to take the answers that staff have provided me on face value. I don't have any contradictory evidence or theory before me, Mr. Mayor. It's my duty as a city councilman to make sure that we have a viable electric utility for, not just for the few more years that we're going to be around here, but for years and decades to come. And I see this is the only way to do it. I know it hurts, but I see no alternative. I appreciate the ideas that have been floated and have been, and I'm reading directly from emails that I've gotten from a dozen people of the public, dozen members of the public. I don't see any other way. This is something that I'm going to have to support. I have, I have no other alternative. I can't bleed the utility dry, I can't stop the transfer, I can't delay the capital improvements. That's not what a prudent course of business, that's not what a... That's not what a prudent course of business, that's not what a person elected by the people for today should expect. And so, I have no other way to go. I mean, my support is, my support for the staff's recommendation is becoming clearer and clearer at this point.
That survey that was done certainly indicates that a huge majority think that we're doing the right thing. Eighty-five percent satisfied or very satisfied with not just this council, but previous councils have done. I think that's a pretty high percentage. And their most important issues are providing streets, traffic, water, and power, and, let's see, what's the other one? Next, maintaining community physically safe and preparing for emergencies. And our primary goal is fiscal responsibility. That's our number-one assignment as council members. It's written right in the charter, I believe, fiscal responsibility.
And coupled with the assistance to the low-income residents, many of you in the audience are seniors, I presume that you're on a fixed pension or fixed income, the net effect of the rate increase for the low income is going to be less than a cup of coffee at the corner Starbucks per month.
Please, you've been great so far. Don't spoil it now. Okay, if there's no more discussion, let's do a roll call on...
Hey, wait a minute, I want to comment.
Mr. Quintero.
Okay, well, I've been listening to Glendale Water and Power for about 12 years, and I haven't been persuaded by the kind of leadership that we've had in the past. That's all in the past. We now have Steve Zern, who will be coming back. We have an interim director. But I have a lot of confidence in him and a lot of confidence in what he's able to do. And I think 4% for the next five years, that's not a small amount of money. That is a big, big increase, because it compounds. I think 4% would be adequate. I think that would take care of some of the upgrades that need to be done. Grand View, that, we were first presented, Grand View, nothing was mentioned about Northwest, just strictly Disney. But now it seems like, in fact, it's part of our overall strategy, and Northwest and the way it's presented makes sense. It's mostly 4K and trying to do 12K. But all in all, I think 4% for five years is a huge increase, and I think with the right leadership, we could accomplish what we set out to do. In terms of the reserves going up to 124 million, we're currently at 46 million. The general fund, I believe, last week, 44, I believe, is a general fund. So it seems to me that, all of a sudden, we need to reach that 124 in five years, but in fact, our general fund reserve is only going to be at 44. So what happens to the police station, case of a catastrophe? What happens to the police station, to the city hall, to all of the other structures that we own? So I'm not sure that we need to be at 124 million. But I just think it's too much.
One type of reliability, and we can have a discussion, another council meeting on the level of reserves, and the reasons they are what they are, and then we can decide if we want to lower them or raise them, whatever. That's a separate discussion item for another day. And I'm pretty sure my colleagues all want to have that discussion. So, and I have the information in front of me, fine. That's what my colleagues would like to do.
Just have a short comment and then see. Taking on what Councilmember Quintero was just stating, I mean, the fact that five-year, 3% per year increase is apparently not even going to make a dent, or a 4% five-years plan is not going to be very helpful, should worry us. I mean, that's us saying 20% increase, not compounded. It's actually, it'll be much more than 20, obviously, because you have to compound. A 20-plus percent increase over the next five years is not going to help Glendale Water and Power. I'm worried about that. That's it. Otherwise, I've stated my reasons last Tuesday.
Yeah, I think we've worn this thing out after two weeks. Let's do a roll call on 7A.
Someone needs to move it. Motion on 7A.
I'll move the ordinance at 7C.
7C, excuse me.
7C.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
No.
Sananian?
No.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi.
Move the resolution at 7C1.
7C1.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
And this is low-income...
This is the resolution on the rates.
Not yet, not yet.
This is the rates.
No.
Sananian?
No.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi. Now, what do we call it?
It would be a motion directing General Manager of GWP to apply public benefit charge funds to offset bills of customers participating in PBC-funded low-income discount programs in the amount of $13 per month.
Quintero, do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll move it.
Mr. Sanan? I'll just let Mr. Sanan do it.
It's done.
One second. Okay, give him the credit. Roll call.
Is Friedman actually seconded?
She, yeah.
She's too fast. Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi. And thank you all for your cooperation and your patience and your quietness tonight. Big, huge improvement from a week ago. Believe me, we hope we have done the right thing, according to the council. Good night, all. We're not done yet. We have more items on the agenda. Please, get outside, then you can talk. Okay? Thank you very much. Okay, what is next, please?
Next on the agenda at 9A under hearings is Acting Director of Public Works regarding 2013 congestion management program, CMP self-certification process. 9A1 is resolution finding City of Glendale to be in conformance with the CMP program and adopting a CMP local development report.
I'll move the item.
I got to open the hearing.
Yeah, I'll open the public hearing. I have no cards. Is there any cards? No cards.
Second the item.
Close the public hearing. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call.
This was moved by Councilmember Najarian, seconded by Quintero. Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi. What is next, please?
Next is oral communication. Discussion is limited. Time is not part of this agenda. Each speaker will be allotted five minutes. Councils may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. City Manager Mayor for the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and report.
Thank you. First Speaker, Shannon Franklin. Now, we're at the five-minute part.
Okay, great, thanks. Hi. My name is Shannon Franklin. I'm a coach and an owner of CrossFit Survival, which is in North Glendale in La Crescenta. And I'm coming to you today because I have a problem, and I need your help. Basically, the code and permitting for my particular situation is old and antiquated. I have two different problems that I'm up against. One is that, in order to have the parking, which I'm sure you guys are used to dealing with, first of all, I wanted to thank the City of Glendale, because they've really been wonderful with working with me on this issue since we've moved in. Anything 1,999 square feet or less, I only need three or four parking spaces. Even if I have 100 square feet above that, now I need 23 parking spaces, because my space is 2,300 square feet. So, as a business owner, I'm looking at having to make a $15,000 renovation to lose 300 square feet of a space that I have signed a fiber lease on. Okay, I will claim ignorance and fault for going ahead and moving into the building without having done my research prior, but that is exactly what I did. Now I'm faced with this problem. So what I look at is that, it doesn't seem to me to be a very prudent use of $15,000. And so, when I look at the law, I'm kind of perplexed by having such a choice of either 1,999 square feet or nothing. In other parts of Glendale, such as Brand Boulevard, I can apply for a parking reduction permit, and generally speaking, from what I understand, if you have a good case, you have a pretty good chance of getting that. There's also an abundance of parking, well, considerably, with parking structures and the like, in that area, as opposed to where I am, where there are no additional parking structures. Okay? So a parking reduction permit is out of the question for me. So the other option I have is to make my space smaller. So the biggest problem, like I said, I'm up against is, why am I going to pay $15,000 to lose 300 square feet? My particular business, I can only fit 20 clients in, which leads me to the second problem that I have with code violations, which are old. I'm being listed as either assembly or school. An assembly assumes, because I have 2,300 square feet, that I can fit 50 people in my building. I need a 10-by-10-foot square, 10-by-10-square-foot space in order for one person to exercise in my facility. We lift barbells overhead, and we drop them forward and backward. Okay? So if you figure I have 2,000 square feet of usable space, and then another 300 of office space, I can fit 20 people in my facility. A busy dress shop, the same size, will also have 20 people at any given time. So it just doesn't make sense to me that I should have to, once again, make this unnecessary change. Okay, I'm kind of getting lost here. There's two different issues here. One is that, what I would propose is that there may be an addendum where, if your usable square feet, or you could prove that you actually don't really need more parking than the average person for that particular space, that there could be an additional choice, perhaps. Like, I have a couple of suggestions here, which I'll give, to fix that. I'm getting nervous. Okay. So one would be, if I could prove to you, once again, that I only need a certain number of parking spaces, that don't go outside the lines. I.e., I'm using the additional 300 square feet for office, office space or storage. Okay? The other one is the fixture count. That's the other problem I'm having. If I'm listed as an assembly, then I'm being asked to have one urinal and one toilet for my males, and three toilets for my females. That means for 20 clients, I have five toilets. Once again, this doesn't make any sense. It's very old, old, excuse me, an antiquated code and permitting that has nothing to do with my business whatsoever. So what I would propose is that there be a section or a choice, as it were, when you're going to permitting, that is called fitness, so that you have a fitness business that you could look at, and that the fixture counts be changed to be applicable to that. That would be more reasonable, A. B, what I would propose is perhaps, instead of making a person lose 300 square feet to make their space smaller, which, if you think about the expenditure, benefits no one, what about a fee, you know, such as, say, something like $500 per every 100 additional square feet, that could be applied, you know, to help the City of Glendale, or, and/or perhaps 10% or 20% of that would even go to a nonprofit of perhaps the city or the individual's choice. So here, you know, if I were to spend, say, $5,000 to accomplish the same goal, more people are benefiting, as opposed to me just having to literally wall off a section of my building to make it smaller, where no one can use it, just so I can get by the code restrictions for parking. I'm sure I'm not really being very clear here. But that's pretty much what I came here to say.
Franklin, did you say you had talked with staff before?
I have talked with staff, and they are working with me, but what it's really boiled down to is I still have to make my particular place 300 square feet smaller in order to be occupied there.
Mr. Agani, I assume your staff is the one she's talking to?
Yes, I will talk to you some more, because there are some options. I'll talk to you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Margaret Hammond, followed by Mike Mohill.
I used to run three miles in 20 minutes over the hills and dales of Glendale.
We're getting older, Margaret.
Eighty-five. Guess I do okay, right? My name is Margaret Hammond, a long-time citizen of Glendale, and I'm very happy to address you again. I've already been up once. Number one, I want to do my bulky item phone number. I am, again, having huge piles of mattresses, clothing, couches, particularly in my area. I don't know why people can't call in and get them picked up. They just don't realize what it's doing to their district and to the value of the property in the area. Thank you for that. The other thing is, on San Fernando Road, going up and down, is the most horrendous, horrific traffic jam. You go over to Central, North and South, same thing, Brand Boulevard, I think even somewhere on Chevy Chase, there's construction. I do not understand why every single north-south city, a street in the city is being torn up. It's absolutely idiotic. I mean, those are the, even on Glendale, there was some for a while, but it's gone away. I just don't understand why they have to be all done at one time. It's absolutely ridiculous. And anyway, the San Fernando Road thing, it gets worse and worse every day, as far as the landscaping. I go up and down that way, because sometimes that's an alternative to, I don't try not to go on the freeway when it's too busy and so forth. I don't see why, at least the plants that have managed to survive till now, could not be watered. There are so, at least 50% of them are dead. It's absolutely, I don't know how much it cost us, the city. I'm going to come and find out how much it costs us to do that landscaping, because it's, and the people that are working on that street, whoever they are, the construction should be responsible. I think it's absolutely horrendous. It took us so long. Anyway, the other thing I want to talk about, and it's become a real thing with me, going to Ruff's, having to bring your own bags. Okay, so what are we doing? We are acting as agents for Ruff's, for them to make more money. You either can pay 10 cents to get this bag, you can pay 15 cents plus a penny tax, which is 16 cents, for a plastic bag. Hello? I thought we banned plastic. And then, to top it off, these are a big bargain right now, two for a dollar, $1.50. Now, come on. People that go, this, in other words, you cannot, your groceries, you can't have them unless you bring, remember to bring your bags, which I don't always do. And I've seen people in line that are, all of a sudden, you know, they're trying to get used to it. Unbelievable. It's, and for people low-income or whatever, and with families, it causes them so much problems. But the thing that drives me crazy is, when we have a ban on plastic bags, and they're selling them, we're now paying instead of getting them for free, with Ruff's name on. Okay, I think that's, that we're advertising for them. Anyway, and people come in bringing filthy bags, throw them down on that thing that moves, up against your groceries and everything else. It's really terrible. It's a health hazard, almost, really. But anyway, I do want to bring that one up, because people, a lot of other people feel the same as I do. And I would like to find out about San Fernando Road. And I also would like to congratulate Councilwoman Friedman on her lovely baby, Rebecca. She brought...
Rachel.
Rachel.
Yeah. Rebecca's a nice name.
I knew it was a name I liked. But anyways, darling baby, I don't know how many of you seniors that she brought and shared with us at our Glendale historical. Which reminds me, we used the Duke Magin. It was fantastic. And I have to say, even though I'm the one that says I don't believe in having alcohol in parks, it was a really nicely well-run, thanks to Catherine Engel, who helped us run the thing up there. We must have had about, at least 300 people. And it was really a nice event. Wasn't it nice?
I forgot to mention it in my comments. I'm glad you brought it up.
I'm glad, no, no, well, I'm just bringing it up because of...
And they did enjoy the alcohol.
It was wonderful, yes, the one.
Pensively.
And it was wonderful. We really had a great time. We used it to the fullest. Thank you.
You're in favor of alcohol now, Margaret?
I've always been in favor of it.
I was about to say that.
You forget, I'm Irish. Don't forget that.
I'm just hoping someone drove you home, Margaret.
We have her on record. Okay. Mike Mohill, follow. Last speaker, Gray James.
Right, if you submit it to Michael, I'm sure it's up here.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. The surrogates of our city union bosses in our last election provided Councilwoman Freeman with about $18,600 from the independent expenditures of the city union. Not with the PowerPoint, please. And Mr. Najarian, about $12,000. These two councilmembers, while on the campaign trail, said everything was just honky-dory, while not to worry about the city finances, but they had done a great job in protecting the interest of the local businesses and the residents. Councilwoman Freeman, who represents the far-left wing of the Democratic Party, is on record since arriving on council in 2009... is on record since arriving on council in 2009 in approving every fee, tax, and bond obligation. In fact, tonight, she wanted to keep the high electric rate structure brought before the city council by our city manager, while her fellow Democrat, Quintero, was willing to go with a modest increase in the electric rate increases. Ladies and gentlemen in the viewing audience, let's talk about the truth in advertising. If you received the mailer of councilmembers Freeman and Najarian, read their advertising messages in the press, or went to any of the council meetings and the forums, did they ever tell you that after the April election, your electric rates would be going up between 30% and 70% over the next five years? Did they tell you that they needed to continue to transfer again $21 million of your money into the pockets of the union employees? Please write your recent elected councilmembers Freeman and Najarian, ask them why they did not speak the truth about having new electric and water rate increases, fees and taxes increase, and new bond obligation. Councilmembers, your constituents would like the truth. Can you tell the truth? Recently, stand-in Councilman Quintero said the Grayson Power Plant was not crumbling or aging because he had driven by many times to see the plant. Did Mr. Quintero actually go inside the Grayson plant and speak with the workers or the superintendent of the plant? What Mr. Quintero did say, according to the Glendale News Press headline news, "A Plant Full of Problems." On Sunday in early April, six out of the power generating eight units at the Grayson Power Plant were all inoperable. One had a blown boiler tube, one was down due to turbine repair work -- excuse me. One was scheduled to be offline and another was out of the picture because two other units were down. The superintendent said the plant generating units were 16 to 42 years beyond their design's life. Mr. Quintero, can you please tell the public the difference between a crumbling power plant and an aging one? Mr. Quintero, again, you said my facts were wrong and because I was a fertilizer salesman, I must be full of it. Well, Mr. Quintero, there are many salesmen, engineers, doctors, lawyers, roofers, gardeners, electricians, carpenters, plumbers, who are holding two and three jobs, who must be full of it in order to make ends meet and question your bias for union workers, and they have no job security, no paid vacation, no medical benefit, or even $100,000-plus lifetime pension at age 50 or 55, as our city employees you protect. Using the GWP as a cash cow for union employees' benefits and transferring millions of dollars to the general fund and the recent $5 million emergency funding for the Grayson Power Plant, plus constant increases of water and electric rates, fees and taxes, and new bond to shore up the GWP is a sure sign of mismanagement and a struggling utility. Ladies and gentlemen in the viewing audience, once glamorous Detroit did not become bankrupt overnight. It took years of mismanagement and slowly drove many businesses and residents to leave the city. Arti, would you please show my power plant of the Grayson data? Ladies and gentlemen, please go to the second column to the end. Years beyond design. We have equipment 42, 36, 30, 24, 19, 16, 16. That's how old -- and the council did not show this to the public, but yet they'll go ahead and transfer millions of dollars out of the GWP into the pockets of our city workers. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill. You can read all about it in the Glendale News Press right here. Thank you.
Mr. Quintero, I wonder--
Yes, well, let me say, I never did--
No, I just wonder if the rumor's true that Mr. Mohill is going to move to a city that's better run than Glendale.
Oh, I don't know, Mr. Weaver, but no, I never said he was full of it. And the relationship between being a fertilizer salesman and my comments, I just thought were kind of comical. But let me get to the issues. And let me say, I've been listening to Mr. Mohill for quite a few years now. It's always doom and gloom. It's always negative. The world is falling apart, but specifically Glendale is going to, you know, fall by the wayside. He mentioned this during the Great Recession, but in fact, it didn't happen. I think we're doing quite well. But as for the plant, I have been inside the plant and we have spent millions on that plant. And also, it's my understanding, basically Grayson is somewhat of a backup. Is that correct? Grayson is a backup. We own power facilities throughout the western United States. They stretch from Washington State into Arizona and throughout California. So we buy, we trade electricity sometimes, so we don't rely on that Grayson Power Plant for -- it's not our sole source of power. As a matter of fact, we also own a percentage of the Burbank Plant there off of the freeway. So I don't know what else he said, but those are just some of the things that came to mind.
That's enough. Hopefully, that rumor's true and you'll leave Glendale.
Weaver?
Oh, yes, Mrs.--
Well, first, I just want the public to know that, as always, as soon as Mr. Mohill finished speaking, he left. So it's not a dialogue he's interested in or any kind of discussion. But first, I just think it's funny to hear Detroit mentioned in the same sentence as Glendale. It's a comparison I've never heard before. I never dreamed that Glendale would be compared with Detroit in any way, if anyone's ever been there. I mean, it's -- I have nothing -- you know, actually, I think Detroit's got a lot of interesting things going for it, but just an interesting comparison. But it's just that what's more interesting to me is that two weeks ago, I think it was two weeks ago, Mr. Mohill was here admonishing the public and said, "During the debates, Ms. Freeman and Mr. Najarian said they would raise your rates and you voted for them anyway." And tonight, he's saying that we didn't say that we'd raise rates, and I'm not going to speak for Mr. Najarian, but during the forums, I was very clear when I was asked about rates, that I didn't see how we could avoid an increase in rates. And I said that at every forum that I was asked. So for him to say that that's not true when he was here for all of those forums, I think is, you know, pretty incredible because he said that himself two weeks ago, and now he's changed his tune. So tis, Mr. Mohill, at least be consistent about it.
Truth in advertising, Ms. Friedman. Truth in advertising.
Last speaker, Gray -- or next to the last speaker, Gray James.
Gray James, Glendale. I am not a public speaker. I think we can all agree on this. I'm not very bright. I pronounced Dace incorrectly. Spelled Dace. I pronounced it Dace. I recently confused a lawyer with an ex-mayor. A few weeks ago, I came to talk to you, and I referenced the murder of Joshua West as a hate crime. It has since been reported Mr. West's murder would be one not of hate but greed. Does it make it any better for his family for his having been murdered at all? Still, it was not a hate crime, in that it turns out I was wrong. Does this make the message wrong, that Mr. Sunanian was elected and a veil of hate and lies? That Glendale was quick to embrace him while telling speakers to can it? That there are people too afraid to come speak here? That this administration never made a statement at all about where it stands on hate speech, hate crimes, or hate? Mr. Sunanian has never been held accountable for his hate and his lies, never. This administration has opted to embrace it. I did bring a-- Mr. Sunanian, you seem very concerned about having your own monument, very preoccupied by it. It was what you talked about most in a recent discussion about another monument. Well, Mr. Sunanian, it seems there is one, ironically and appropriately enough, online. It's all you. It's your hate, your lies. It's your minimal effort and your empty promise of conciliatory gesture. Congratulations. It must make you very proud, this legacy you will be leaving behind. Now that you have your own monument, maybe you can start listening to the voices of others.
Thank you. Mr. Sunanian.
Ms. James. Mr. James?
James.
I just want to thank you for coming back. I knew that you'd probably come back on a day of a really big vote in the city. Listen, I'd love to sit down with you and talk about what meaningful, according to you, steps I could take to make it right, if it's at all possible. But I'll tell you that connecting me to a murder or connecting to a former council member to a murder in any way, even as an attorney, just because they have an Armenian last name, is not the right way to do it. And also, you just referred to, "I want to have my own monument." I don't know what you're referring to. If you're referring to a monument to the memory of the genocide of one and a half million Armenians, again, referring to it as "my own monument" is just not a productive way of doing it. So I would love the opportunity to sit down with you and have a frank conversation of what it is that you think I can do to make things better.
Let's do that.
Thank you. I look forward to it.
Do we have her phone number?
We'll make sure that we get--
Yes. May I contact you? May I be the one? Because you can contact me, but I'm happy to contact you.
Just leave your phone number with the city.
I can send you an email. It will give you my--
I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Nick Franklin, last speaker. Give him a mic. Hang on there, Nick.
I don't know if we have the wireless.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's very nice to be able to come back.
Hold it up, Nick.
Yes, sir. It's very nice to come back and speak to you guys again, and ladies, about some things that the mayor has been very gracious to call me at my home and discuss with me on the phone. I found out today, talking to the gentleman who takes care of traffic, crosswalks and all of this, that they are going to upgrade the crosswalk. Because my care provider, who's been taking care of me for 24 years, she comes from Silmar, and we really love each other because she does a really good job. We have a really deep respect for each other. So they're going to fix that problem. And where there were supposed to be some trees in front of a market across the street from the nice Seventh Day Adventist Church, there was never any trees put back. So they're going to investigate doing something with those sidewalks because it's really a very dangerous sidewalk. You just walk for a while, you walk into dirt. Or in my case, roll into dirt. And it's just not real safe. And I'm here tonight also in memory of my mother, who was a resident of Glendale for a short season. She was very sick for many years, Texas, with Alzheimer's disease. And the Lord finally took her home to her rest. And she was a very courageous woman and taught me to be the kind of man that I am. And also, to my very good friend, Larry Zarian, that I miss so very much, too. I used to walk with him on the weekends. He'd have to run to catch up with me, but we -- I kept him in shape. I'm very grateful to be in the city because where I lived before, it took three locks to unlock my front door. Three locks, three keys. Now it takes one key to unlock my front. And people really care in this city. And I just need to say this, and then I'll respectfully be quiet. I'm tired of hearing about Social Security. If we did not have Social Security or SSI to live on, or if we did not have a home supportive service to help us, we could not make it. You know, that's a gift to us from the government. They could choose not to do anything. But Franklin Roosevelt chose to do this for us. So even though others have spoken, have a different attitude, it's their right to have that attitude. But I don't think it's right for them to necessarily pour their attitude onto everybody else. But for those of us that don't take that attitude, we remain grateful for what we have, for what we -- from where we've come from. Thanks to Dr. Martin Luther King, Rosa Parks, Mr. Zarian. We can get on a bus, can be freed on a bus, city bus with dignity. We can go where we need to go safely. But that's a long time coming, too. So all of y'all that have had a part in that, it's greatly appreciated. You shouldn't always have to say, "I need, I need, I need." Thank you's a good couple of words to say every once in a while. If anybody didn't understand what I said from my heart--
We did. Thanks, Nick.
I'll be glad to try and say it again some other time.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too, sir. I really appreciate it.
Okay. We have no more cards. What's next? I guess it's no new business. Motion to adjourn?
Move adjourn.
Adjourn at 7:47.